I have six thirty.
Six thirty, so we'll call the meeting to order and start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you call a roll, please, Joan.
Mayor Swenson.
Here.
Counselor Gordon is not here. Counselor Tafe.
Here.
Counselor Bakel.
Yep.
Counselor Christensen.
Here.
Okay. So, first item on the agenda is, are there any comments or changes to the agenda or?
I've added two, two things to the agenda that's highlighted in yellow on the back.
Okay. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Councilman Christensen. Any further comments or questions? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We don't have anything under old business, so we'll move on to the new business and first item on the new business, right?
Did you want to do your, I think you're on the back page.
Oh, am I? Okay. So, Nick Kooz from Woodseth is not here tonight because there's no, nothing to update us on as far as the 2020 road project. Tom Buikens was going to talk about additional hangers at the airport and the possibility of new equipment. He couldn't make it, so we'll move on to the, to my section and and we're going to have a meeting to discuss the treatment of Starry Stonewort with the DNR, Lake Association, Pope County, the city and the state of Minnesota on November, or on Monday, September eighteenth at the community center at one P M. And that's just going to be a work session and it's more of an educational session to update everybody on the latest scientific information and so forth. And I hope all council can make it and so, and I think there's a, do we have a?
Agenda?
Agenda in the, in your information here, so. I think this is going to, this meeting will take a little while, so I don't think we're going to get into discussing a plan. We'll probably have to set another date for, for a meeting with the Lake Association and so forth to discuss a plan and so forth, so. And I think Tim Douglas is going to be at the meeting, so.
Good.
So.
So, paper will still come up, but I still say, for those who get the paper before one o'clock, they're invited. Can the public come?
Sure. Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, as long as we have a quorum of the council, you know, the public is invited and so forth, so, yeah. So. The other thing I wanted to discuss is, and as I said, Nick Kooz from Woodseth is not going to be here. Lighthouse project, we're trying to meet with Schroder from Glenwood and pursue some additional grant opportunities. And before we move ahead with that, obviously, it's not going to happen this year. And hopefully next, we'll get it going next year. Next item on the agenda is the police report and Chief Mitch Johnson.
Not much for you guys, but yeah, so August, we had one hundred and fifty-seven calls for service, which is down from July. We had one hundred and ninety-nine, so it's kind of slowed down a little bit there, so, but we still seem to be busy, but it's not as busy as it was last July, I guess, so. Felix Spence, is there any, are there any questions just on calls for service or anything like that? Nothing like that? Yeah, the only other thing I have is just, yeah, we're getting just prepared for the street dance this weekend, so just remind everybody that there's going to be a lot of people in town supposedly, so just bear with us. And hopefully parking's going to be an issue, but I think people are going to be respectful about it and whatever, so if there's any issues, just let us know, but we'll do our best to take care of it as fast as we can.
Are they busing anybody on that, or?
They do have a bus in Glenwood. Lakeside bus is coming every half hour, dropping and bringing back. And I think the last, I think, I think it starts at five thirty and then in the last stop is, or last pickup is to bring back, is it like eleven thirty or something like that?
Okay, so people are there, so.
Yep, so if they're coming from Glenwood, there'll be a pickup. But if you're living in Starbucks, then yeah, you're just going to have to park, but, or walk, whatever you're going to do. But the only pickup is in Glenwood at Lakeside, so, and that'll pick up on that every half hour, so.
Are they going to have that car here for the?
Yeah, so the car will be here eventually. I'm not sure that, what time they're bringing that over, but I'm not even sure where they're going to put it, but I know it's, it'll be in the general outside the dance there, so. So, we'll be, Friday starting, they're going to start probably seeing some equipment. They're going to, not, not setting up the gates or anything, but we're going to bring, start bringing some more vehicles over here and stuff to stage and get it ready. And then I believe on Saturday morning, they'll be hitting it early and putting up gates and getting the dance ready. Because then on two thirty on, on Mon, or Saturday, was their national light out, so I encourage everybody to show up for that to kind of, we have a, the inflatables, we have a rock walk, like they can, the same, not the same people, but the rock wall that's coming from the Minnesota National Guard. So that'll be good and prizes for the kids and everything like that. We've done in the past and free food and a lot of vendors showing up, so hopefully that'll be good. That'll go from two thirty to five thirty and kind of flow into, and we have music from the Sun Dogs, which is Scott Lemka, who's the principal out at the middle school. So it's his, his band, it's a two, two man band, so they're really good. So that'll be playing and other than that, should be a good time, so. Just encourage everybody to attend that. But other than that, I don't have anything unless you guys have any things, questions or anything you want to bring up.
The SRO situation, you know, it sounds like Governor Walz is not going to call a special session, so.
Yeah, it's, that was the hope that he was going to do that. I know he talked a couple times on TV, but we've, we've really pushed it on the Minnesota Chiefs Association side of it. Sheriff's have kind of pushed it. It's just it really, the new law really puts some a lot of restrictions on the SRO. And so we are keeping our SRO at the school at this time, so just because of the call volume up there again, but he's, he's adapting, we're, we had to follow some different protocols. So, but he's aware of those protocols and we are, I'll be, probably be called up there a little more frequently than, than normal. But until hopefully they can figure it out eventually, I don't know what's going to happen, but there's a lot of schools, a lot of, I mean, a lot of agencies, a lot of cities that are dropping out and canceling contracts, so. I know for a fact there's over thirty agencies and then that's not including, like if you go to the cities, some of these agencies have, you know, three, four schools and they have three or four or five officers that are working in schools and now they're no longer. And so we're drawing, getting a lot of, a lot of movement. It's definitely affecting the safety of the schools and, and staff and kids, so it'll be interesting.
So this is going to put more pressure on you and?
Yeah, a lot more pressure because there's a civil and a criminal liability for Ryan that he's subject to, so. And it just doesn't make sense because basically the cops are calling the cops. So if Ryan needs help, he's got to call basically a cop to come up and help. He can use, any time there's imminent threat of bodily harm or death, then he can use any force needed, as reasonably needed. But if that's not the case, I mean, effecting a simple arrest as a disorderly conduct or trespass, he's not even allowed to put handcuffs on him. It's just ridiculous, so. So it's just a lot of, a lot of muddy water in the, in the, in the legislation that came out, the new law. There's no really can, a lot of gray areas, so that's what's kind of leading us to these, these issues. And it's, we've already got a statute that, you know, applies to the use of force, to the parole constraint, which is six, I know, six oh nine statutes. So it's like they're adding another statute to more, to be more restrictive than the six oh nine, which is, doesn't make sense because it shouldn't matter from where we're standing. No matter if I'm standing in the street out here at the school, we should be able to do our jobs either way, so. But it's a little frustrating, but hopefully some things can get done and hopefully the governor, I don't know. I think people are going to have to keep pushing them and keep, keep on the legislation to pull, pull a special, special session, so.
So, you think we'll have to get together with Chip and negotiate a contract for next year, or?
I think we, we should. I, I think we should at least get a contract in place. And, you know, like I said, like I think our current contract states, you know, either party can cancel that within a ninety day notice and, or if both parties agree, it can be effective immediately. So I think a contract would be good either way. And unless you're looking at, you know, we decide to pull Ryan and then he'd have to be, again, we've had, we have to discuss those options, either put him, city would have to pick up the funds to put him on the street, or you'd have to let him go, which I don't want that to happen, so.
Then the school loses funding and?
School loses funding, yep, and then they, yep, so they get grant funding for all this and that's how they pay it really, for all this. So if they, they don't have those funds to distribute, then they would no longer accept those grants, so. But it's a big, it's a big deal and it's affecting a lot of smaller cities like ourselves. And I don't think they realize that, you know, these bigger cities have a bigger budget, bigger tax base that they can take on these kids, or these officers that are coming out of the schools, which is probably not a big deal to them. But when you take that away from a small city, now you're looking at officers losing jobs or either cities taking out or hire. You know, the budget is going to increase definitely if you decide to take another officer on, so, full time, so.
All right, Eric, Mitch, can I ask you a real quick question? And I know we'll talk about it next week, but most of the staff isn't trained or restrained there in addition to the officer. So do they have to change?
So, this law also applies to them.
It does.
So they are more restrictive than what it was done before. So now they have a new, I don't know what the training's called.
But it, it, they are also.
They are also affected by this.
Okay.
So it makes it hard for everybody, not just law enforcement.
Including the kids.
Yep, so, yep. But yeah, that's for now. Again, we're keeping them, keeping it in there. Things have been going well. You know, we've had a couple incidents, but Ryan, you know, he's fully aware, we've heard a talk, could talk about what I expect and expectations and what he needs to do, so hopefully everything just goes well, so. Do you have any other questions?
Was there any update to the golf cart signage that?
Oh, so, yeah, that maybe, he did get the grant.
Oh, wonderful.
It was the grant Yamaha?
Or Wires?
Yamaha, I think, Yamaha. He did get that grant.
Okay, cool.
So they will fund it and I think they just got to have a meeting to discuss what you guys want specifically on that sign. And then, yeah, he did. That's a good question because totally forgot about that, but. So, yeah, he just got that last week approved.
Were you thinking of doing that this year then, or waiting till spring?
I think probably spring because it's just to design it and it would, it would be nice to have it up before, you know, the golf court season kind of hits, but. So if, maybe it could happen. I don't know how, how fast I would think, I mean, it's a sign. I think you just got to get your details and what you want, the verbiage on it and then installing it and getting the, I'm not sure what it consists of putting together, so. But, yeah, that is approved, so.
Cool.
Good.
So, other than that, anything else? No?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess next item on the agenda is wastewater plant roof replacement. The engineer hasn't gotten back to us yet.
Correct. But it looks like the roof will need to be replaced and insurance will probably cover it.
So it's probably something that'll be on next month's agenda, I would assume.
Yeah, Randy's on vacation, so.
So, okay. And next item on the agenda is a new filter return pump for wastewater plant and?
That he would like approved. There's a quote for that that we have here.
And I understand that's about the only place you can get a pump, or?
Um, correct. And he's using a repaired one right now, so he would like to have an extra one in case something happens.
Mm-hmm. Okay. How's that fit into our budget, so?
Um, well, it's not specifically budgeted for, but we have the money left for it, so.
Okay. Okay. And that's a pump that pumps it between the wastewater plant and the holding tank, or?
You'd have to ask Randy. Exactly.
Okay. I think it is, so, okay. Well.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve getting the new pump for nine thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Okay. And I will second that, so. So I have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve the purchase of a new electric pump for, pump for the wastewater plant for ninety-three eighty-six and seconded by myself. And is any further discussion or questions?
Do you know what's going to happen with the existing pump?
Um, he'll either let it run until it wears out or keep it as a backup.
Not sell it for offsetting the cost?
Uh-uh, no, I don't believe so.
Hmm, so. Okay. Okay, there's no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, so. Uh, next item on the agenda is the LED lighting replacement project for twenty twenty-three and I guess Randy has been working with Excel on that.
Yeah, I think there's a spreadsheet in your packet on that. It would be to convert the lights in the city hall, the city shop, garage, airport, water treatment plants. The costs of, we get, are getting a rebate from Excel. So after the rebate, the cost would be thirteen thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. And they estimate the payback would be less than two years on that, so it's a pretty good deal. The total cost is twenty-one thousand and the rebate would be seventy-eight hundred, which would leave the thirteen thousand as the final cost.
And the lights would be installed by Excel then, or do we have to install them, or?
There's just, there's opt, various options on that. I think this includes installation, but.
Okay. Okay. Any questions, or?
No, do you need a motion to approve that, or?
Well, we do, yeah. I mean, it's, you know, it's a cost savings in the long run and.
Well, I'll make that motion to replace those LED lightings that we're on, but we need them here. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Bakel to approve the LED light replacement project, seconded by Councilman Tafe. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Fire Chief Doug Noyes.
Okay. We're looking to replace our nineteen eighty-eight fire truck, which is a manual and not that many people can drive anymore. So we did put in a grant to the DNR and they do have a truck that we can get. It's a two thousand and seven Chevy one ton duly. They run them through their shop and check them over. It's got sixteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-four miles on it. And it would need to be painted, so I didn't get numbers on that. And then they add the lighting to it. So I think you guys have pictures of the truck, so you can see it needs to be painted. But the truck itself is seven thousand dollars and painting is going to be about five thousand and the lights with siren and putting the radio we have in our current truck in there is four thousand, six hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. So we have it budgeted for a truck this year, but when you can get a DNR truck that's quite a bit cheaper, we're taking them out and beating them through the trees and stuff anyway, so save us, save us a bunch of money.
And we've had this on the CIP plan, on the fire contracts for the last couple of years, so.
Correct.
The cost of this has really been paid for through the fire contracts, so it's a good deal.
What's that?
I might know, good deal.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Yeah, it's a pretty good deal.
Were there two trucks in discussion? Because the one, the picture and the vehicle report both have sixteen thousand on the odometer and the email is talking about a truck.
He was wrong on the email, it was a different truck. They do have other trucks, but they're regular cabs and that wouldn't fit our.
Sixteen thousand dollars for the seven, or seven hundred, seven thousand dollars for the sixty thousand mile.
Yep. And what I talked to him today and what he'll do is he'll bring it down here and we have it for sixty days. And then in that sixty days, we either decide, because I wanted to look at it in person, and he'll bring it down. And if we don't like it in that sixty days, then we can get it back to him or they, we send him a check and take the truck. Which, going through their shop, they just put all brand new tires on it too, so that's part of their seven thousand dollars, so.
I'm not seeing much rust on it either, so.
No, and the box is plastic on that from a. Yep, so that won't rust there. And I know a good body shop guy, so he'll take care of us.
I wish I did one, too.
Yeah.
So.
I think it's a good deal.
Well, are you looking for immediate motion for that today?
So what I can do is I can do the, as long as I can get it down here, we can look it over. I don't necessarily need, I'll come back next month to get, to pay for it. As long as I can get it down here and give them that thumbs up on that, I guess is what I'm looking for and.
Yep. I think that's something that you guys, after reviewing it, want to go forward with. I don't think we'd have a problem with it, so.
And then I think the, you know, the relief and put a little money in and then obviously we'll have our other truck to sell as well. That should be worth some, it's probably worth as much as their truck, you know. But it's just harder to get people who can drive a manual transmission nowadays. And so I'd rather save the money on this and get a tanker sooner because that's, gets driven a lot less because it's a manual ten, super ten, so it's a lot harder and it's unbaffled tanks, so I'd, kind of more of a safety issue to me than, so.
Should we send some of the firemen to training school to learn how to drive manual?
We could.
Maybe Mitch could teach them perhaps?
We could, yeah.
Do you have any seventy-year-olds on there that?
The super tens are horrible. I don't like, I drive truck and I don't like super tens, but. People who like them, Todd John, so he knows how to run, he can run just fine, but it's not, they're not for me.
That's a different story.
Yeah. So, the other thing that they do have is a two thousand eight, I think it's a eight by sixteen enclosed trailer. So it's something we could put our excess equipment in. Won't fit the side by side, but like our grain bin rescue stuff and, and things like that, something that we could put that in. So all we have to do is hook up and, and go with it too, so. I'll see if it was all right to get that at the same time.
How much is that?
Eighteen fifty, sorry.
Is that new?
Two thousand eight. It's, it's very, very good condition, so it didn't look like it had any.
Eight by sixteen.
Yep. I think he called it a twenty-one or something, but it's, he's including the hitch, so.
But tires on that are new, or?
Yep, they sent it through the shop, checked everything, over brakes and everything. A lot of these things are parked and, so.
Does that need a paint job along with the?
Nope, that's white. It looks good.
Cool.
It's going to be good note. Might need a decal on it though, I guess. I don't have decals on either of these, but just get, get to have so much equipment too on extra drop tanks or this or that, and so.
You said that one was eighteen hundred?
Eighteen fifty.
Eighteen fifty, okay.
So that's the same thing, if I can get that down here and then we can look at it and make the decision on it and then come back to you guys and approve it and get payment.
I think they need it more than you do.
And it's something we have to keep for so many years, just like our lake pump and stuff like that too, so.
You're bad, honey.
Yep.
Well, I would try it out and advise us what you think if you want to move forward.
Okay. Sounds perfect. I don't think I have anything else. Do you guys have anything for me?
How many of your people are working the event on Friday?
Hopefully a lot, but I don't really, they have a lot of stuff covered, so it's, it helps. But there'll be a lot of setup and stuff like that to, to get done, but we've done it a few times, so it helps. So it's changed a little bit, but it'll be fine.
Well, I'll be out of town, but if you need extra help, Mary is going to volunteer.
Not a problem.
I appreciate that.
I'm learning how to roller skate, so I can shoot back and forth.
Just take the bus on the go and then catch you when it comes back.
Right, or just stay over there.
That's where I'll stay, it's safer.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anything you have, Joan?
Um, everything of mine is pretty much later in the meeting.
Okay.
Just that we had our cleanup day Saturday and that was successful, so. Collected five hundred and fifty-two dollars. But most of it was free, so.
Uh, next item on the agenda, I guess, is the Hobo Park violation of lease and I don't know if you wanted to introduce that, Joan, or?
Well, there's nobody from Hobo Park to discuss it, but some of the employees at Hobo Park have an issue with one of the seasonal people there and would like the council's approval to not invite them back for next season. Um, I think some of you have some information on that. I think a few of you have talked to the residents. It was really a request from Hobo Park, so.
Well, and I mean, I feel like it's their, their decision to make, you know, they're the ones that are doing the daily interaction. I think one, the one thing that I was talking to, I think Tiffany about was talking about the lawyer and adding a condition eleven, just basically spelling out the fact that invitation or re-invitation for the following year is up to the discretion of Hobo Park management. And that way, that would kind of close the loop and not, you know, not make it a city council issue, but make it rather a Hobo Park issue to decide if they, their, their renewal of their stay is discretionary, so.
And they can certainly do that, but just wanted to let everybody know because they will, there'll be lots of phone calls involved in this, so. They want to terminate it under the lease nine, section nine A, that says creates a disturbance is disorderly, makes threats or breaches the peace of the campground in any fashion. that says creates a disturbance is disorderly, makes threats or breaches the peace of the campground in any fashion. So.
And then just to be clear, that's, that allows them to immediately terminate, but we're not doing that route, we're letting them finish out the rest of the year.
Yeah, the year's almost over and there's a, um, potential letter written here that, you know, everyone could take a look at, that we were going to send if it's approved, um, giving them till October second. You won't find it.
I'm gonna make...
You're the only one, okay.
Here, you can, I'm just kind of passing. So if you want to, you know, kind of leave it at the discretion of the Hobo Park management, then, um, that'll definitely be sent out.
Talked to our city attorney about it, or?
Um, no, he's not there, he'll call us back, he couldn't call, gone, on vacation.
I just, my, my main concern is violating a contract, you know, I'm not a contract attorney, so as long as we're doing everything.
Yeah, and it would be after the end of this season, so.
So it'd be outside of the contract terms.
Right.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that was on record.
I feel that it's up to the Hobo Park staff to decide if they wanna cancel and not invite them back.
I, I tend to agree with that too, we're not dealing with people on a day-to-day basis like they are, we don't know their, their situation, so I, I agree with Chris on that.
Do we need it in a motion, or?
Um, probably.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the Hobo Park staff, uh, to cancel the invitation for next year's lease.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to, uh, approve the Hobo Park management, uh, decision to terminate the lease, uh, seconded by Councilwoman Bockel, is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to discuss a preliminary twenty twenty-four general fund budget and tax levy and, uh, I think we discussed that in the, uh, work session and, uh, so. Is there anything you wanna add, Joan, as far as the, the three items there, or anything?
Um, no, it's just the preliminary budget is at five percent, which, um, you know, we discussed can go down, but not up.
Yeah.
So.
No, I thi- you know, I think with inflation, the way it's been, you know, that's a reasonable, reasonable estimate and so forth, so.
I'll make the motion to approve the preliminary levy certification of taxes payable in twenty twenty-four for the county.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by, uh, Councilman Christensen to, uh, approve the preliminary twenty twenty-four general fund budget and tax levy, seconded by Councilman Tafe, uh, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven, appr- uh, adopting the twenty twenty-three preliminary budget and tax levy payable in twenty twenty-four.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution two zero two-three dash two-seven, adopting the twenty twenty-three preliminary budget and tax levy payable in twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Christensen to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven, adopting the twenty twenty-three preliminary budget and tax levy payable in twenty twenty-four, seconded by Councilman Tafe. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Uh, next item on the agenda is to approve preliminary levy certification of taxes payable in twenty twenty-four for the county, um...
It's just kind of redundant, it's the same numbers, it's just the form that goes to the county.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the preliminary levy certification for taxes payable in twenty twenty-four.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve preliminary levies certification of taxes payable in twenty twenty-four for the county, seconded by Councilman Christensen, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Uh, the next item on the agenda is to approve inter-fund transfers for the twenty twenty-three bond payments per the attached spreadsheet. Is there any questions or discussion on that?
These are fun, or, these are monies that come out of the funds, like water sewer.
I'll make the motion to approve the inter-fund transfer for twenty twenty-three bond payments.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve the, uh, the inter-fund transfers for twenty twenty-three bond payments per the attached spreadsheet, seconded by Councilman Christensen. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Uh, next item on the agenda is to approve the Northern Natural Gas Pipeline Facility easement, uh, they're, uh, e- expanding, uh, the perimeter of their, of their, uh, pipeline facility and just north of the, uh, uh, water plant. The, uh, Planning and Zoning Committee has recommended approval and, uh, our, uh, Randy Peterson's also recommended approval of it, so.
I'll make the motion to approve the Northern Natural Gas Pipeline Facility easement.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve the Northern Natural Gas Pipeline Facility easement, seconded by Councilwoman Bockel. Uh, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to discuss the status of Beachside RV Conditional Use Permit and CUP and, uh, I don't know if you wanna give us some background on this, Joan, or?
Um, well, I think I have copies included in there, um, when Beachside RV Park opened, there was a conditional use permit, um, they, um, the, RV Park was approved based on the conditions of the, uh, permits and that was to build a fence along all the residential housing. And that has not been done, multiple letters have been sent asking them to comply with it and they've been ignored, so. Our attorney suggests we have a hearing and, um, their permit will be revoked if they don't comply.
This, this would come up, uh, in the October meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And they signed off on this conditional use permit?
Yes, yep.
When was the, uh?
Planning and zoning has also looked at this and agreed with it, with this approach, so.
And you said letters have been sent, so they?
Many letters have been sent.
Yeah, the original CUP was signed in twenty twenty, twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen?
So they've had many years to, and there's also fence that they need to replace for the airport, twenty seventeen.
Right, that's not part of the CUP, but it's never been done, right. So, the plan is to talk to the attorney and he's gonna kind of walk us through the steps, what we need to do and pretty sure that will include, um, a hearing in October.
Would that be a?
Or November at the latest.
A special hearing that they're invited to attend?
Yes, yeah.
Yep.
So you're looking for a motion to move forward with?
Probably, we'll probably make it official.
I'll make the motion that we move forward with, uh, looking into the CUP condition of the fence and possibly revoking the CUP.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion by Councilman Tafe to discuss the, uh, move forward with the Beachside RV Conditional Use Permit, uh, uh, compliance, seconded by Councilwoman Bockel, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to request to vacate a dedi- dedicated right-of-way separating lots one through six on the third and twentieth blocks of East Ninth Street, so, and the, uh, this is a request by Cody Lee and, uh, Planning and Zoning has, uh, recommended that, uh, the council reject the, the, uh, request and, uh, because the, the alleyway or the, uh, street, I guess you'd call it a street.
Mm-hmm, it's a street, it's sixty-six feet.
You know, would be, uh, something we'd need for future utilities and so forth, so.
There's also a natural gas line that run, currently runs through there, so.
Well, then if any of those lots get developed?
Mm-hmm. It's also the area that flooded, uh, pretty badly this spring, so.
Flooding?
Hmm?
That's flooding, you said?
Flooded this spring with the snow melts.
Well, I say we deny it, if that's what these kids think, uh, deny the right-of-way of lots one through six on the third and twentieth blocks, East Ninth Street.
Is that your motion?
Yep, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Bockel to, uh, to, uh, deny the request to vacate a dedicated right-of-way separating lots one through six on third and twentieth blocks of East Ninth Street, seconded by Councilman Tafe, uh, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to approve a public hearing in October for the subdivision of, uh, PID number twenty-seven dash zero zero eight seven dash zero zero two on two oh four Wallen Street.
I'll make a motion to approve a public hearing in October for the subdivision of PID two-seven dash zero zero eight seven dash zero zero two on two oh four Wallen Street.
I'll second that.
And as I understand, the, uh, the individual requesting it owns both lots and, uh, and it would not, uh, be a problem.
Right.
Subdividing as far as the, uh, dimensions of the, uh, of the lots or anything, so.
And she had a survey done, which she attached, which is attached too, so, that's also gone through planning and zoning.
So we have a motion by Councilman Christensen to approve, uh, a public hearing, uh, for the subdivision of PID twenty-seven dash zero eight seven dash zero zero two on two oh four Wallen Street, seconded by, uh, Councilwoman Bockel, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to approve parcel classification and public auction of tax-forfeited land to the state of Minnesota, two oh six East Seventh Street, uh, PID twenty-seven dash zero two zero nine dash zero zero zero. And that is the lot that we, uh, removed the house from on, on, uh, twenty-eight and twenty-nine, highway twenty-eight and twenty-nine, so.
Last year, it was torn down and it's been forfeited now for taxes, so.
I'll make the motion to approve, uh, parcel classification and public auction of tax-forfeited land of parcel number two-seven dash zero two zero nine dash zero zero zero.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve parcel classification and public auction of tax-forfeited land of the state of Minnesota, two oh six East Seventh Street, PID number twenty-seven dash zero two zero nine dash zero zero zero, seconded by Council, um, Lynn Christensen, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight, accepting the donation from John Havig for the annual night to unite.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, or twenty-eight.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman, uh, Tafe to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight, accepting donation from John Havig for the annual night to unite, seconded by Councilman Christensen, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, accepting the donation from the Starbuck Study Club for the annual night to unite.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, accepting the donation from the Starbuck Study Club for the annual night to unite, seconded by Councilman Christensen, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Uh, last item on the agenda is to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty, accepting the donation from the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Foundation for the annual night to unite in the amount of thirteen hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty, accepting donation from the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Foundation for the annual night to unite in the amount of thirteen twen- seventy-five, seconded by Councilman Christensen, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. And that concludes our agenda and, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, we are adjourned, so. Thank you all, and...